It is seven o'clock. I call the Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, meeting of the Village's Suffering Planning Board Order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Did you say the doors are locked and there's people out there?
Who said that?
My sister's out there. She just called me.
Oh.
Oh, the outside doors.
All right, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, thank you. Yeah, I guess we should unlock the doors, let the people in if they want to, okay.
You might want to wait.
They let me in. Okay, well.
At least because there's going to be adjournments.
All right, so we got the masses walking in. Okay, so item number one on the agenda is the public hearing for 156, 160 Wayne Avenue, multifamily project. They have requested that we adjourn this until the June meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn until June 18th? For the June meeting?
I'll make a motion.
And that's June 18th? You have to give the date.
Yeah, June 18th. That would be Mr. Stangebridge, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Second on the agenda is La Chocolat, same thing. It was a continuation of public hearing, however, we are going to adjourn it until the June meeting.
Continue the meeting.
Continue the public hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn it to the June meeting, June 18th?
I'll make a motion.
7:00 PM? Who made the motion?
I'm at, I'm at.
Mr. Stangebridge, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all right, motion carries. Third on the agenda is JP Morgan Chase Bank, the solar panels, 67 Lafayette Avenue. Is anybody here for that? Well, I'm sorry, we'll see you in June. Yeah, please say your name and address for the record.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Brian Powers. I'm with Black and Beach. We represent JP Morgan Chase in their efforts for the solar carports. My address is at 45 Eisenhower.
Can you talk into the mic a little bit? I don't know if he's picking it up.
Yeah. Again, my name is Brian Powers. Is that working now with the mic? With Black and Beach, 45 Eisenhower Drive in Paramus, New Jersey. We're here representing JP Morgan Chase in the solar carport project.
Great. My understanding is that you went to the ZBA and for a zoning variance and it was granted?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this project? It's two charging ports with solar panels on the Chase parking lot?
No, 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 no.
So it's one?
Yeah, originally it was two solar carports, and I guess there was a misunderstanding with the electric utility over what, I guess, 10 feet or how it was measured. We were originally instructed, as long as we were below 10 feet from the wires, we'd be good. They then came back and said, no, it should also be, in addition to the vertical dimension, the horizontal and the parking lot. And the way the wires are on wouldn't allow for that second carport, so it's now just the one carport.
Okay, all right, I stand corrected. So it's one carport. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
And that's what the new plan showed, correct, that you submitted?
Yes, all the new plans submitted show the one carport. My understanding is we're back here because I think the first time we were here, you guys declared yourself lead agency, so I guess you just need to rule on that. That's my understanding.
Right, well, and grant you the site plan approval.
Yeah.
It was, you know, you were directed to go to the ZBA, and I believe the board already issued a negative declaration on this because it wouldn't have gone to the ZBA without that, so. If it's an order, or it is an order, if the board is so inclined, to entertain a motion to approve the final site plan.
Do we have a motion to approve the final site plan for the Chase solar charging carport?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. McInerney, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Van Sickel, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Do we need to wait for a written decision, or can we start the application for building permit?
You can probably go ahead and get started.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Number four on the agenda, 78 East Malpee Avenue, two-lot subdivision.
Hi, PROO, I'm President of PRO Enterprises, owner of 78 East Malpee Avenue in Suffolk.
Do you want to sort of address?
Well, go ahead. Do you want to discuss what you're going to do and then we'll advise?
Sure, the application was, the proposal was to turn the one lot back into his historical lot configuration, which was two, so that's all we requested at this time.
So, just a couple of things. In looking at the plan, it doesn't really show, it just shows former tax lot line. And it actually shows that lot line going through the driveway of the existing lot, so it's already creating a encroachment, if you will. So the only thing I would ask is if you could get your surveyor to do what's called a bulk table? Because I don't know, because the existing house may or may not require variances because of the new line. In other words, if the lot, if the new line may be perfectly fine, but then the house would be, if it's too close to that line, you know, it might need a variance. So I think if you tell him, you know, you need, that the board asked for a bulk table, and for a specific, you know, it should say, instead of being identified as former tax lot line, it should say proposed lot line, because that's what it, you know, because this will get filed in the county clerk's office and will be used for the basis of deeds and things. So it can't just say former tax lot line. It has to say proposed lot line.
Proposed lot line and bulk table.
Right, a bulk table for the existing house.
Okay.
And it may show that it doesn't need any variances, and then you're fine. If it shows you need variances, then it'll have to go to the zoning board.
Yeah, I don't think it does. I did speak to the sufferer inspector, and yeah, it just, yeah, there was a driveway that we can resolve as far as take, you know, this.
Yeah, I mean, the board could as a condition make you file, you know, a, some type of agreement or easement or something, just so that, you know, anybody who's buying this new lot knows that the driveway encroaches, but, you know, it doesn't necessarily, necessarily preclude you from getting the subdivision.
Correct.
Unless the board has an issue with it.
Thank you.
Not legally.
I'm not familiar with this case. You have a big lot and you want to divide part of it and build it?
Show them.
I see, I see. And that vacant lot is empty now.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, this lot is completely empty now?
Yes.
Yes, I barely could hear you, but I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I should speak into the mic. Okay.
The other thing, well, is it the same size? 5897? Maybe they can move the line, I don't know, but.
Yeah.
Or do something with the driveway?
Yeah, exactly. The survey and I, and we have a plan, so yeah.
I mean, is the plan is to remove the driveway or cut it back, or no?
Yeah, it was just a recent blacktop, so it's something that can be taken care of.
If that's the intention, you can show, have your surveyor show to be removed.
Okay.
That section is to be removed.
Okay, sounds good.
That might be the best way to go.
Yeah.
All right, so we have, take care of that, and talk to Joanne, and we can discuss this next month if everything's in order.
Sounds good.
Right. Thank you. All right, number five on the agenda.
So it's adjourned? Do you want to say you adjourned?
I'm sorry, yeah, we adjourn it to June 18th. All right, number five on the agenda, Suffering WALLC, 37 Washington Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I have to come, I have to come within 10 minutes of all those items thrown. I gotta tell you.
Don't ruin it.
Um, no, I certainly won't. I certainly won't. My, our project attorney is not here, but.
He was planning, he probably, he thought it would start around eight, so.
Just with the number of items, but I think we could, I think we'll be fine. Okay. Where would you like me to set up though?
I think right there is good, I think, yeah.
Do they have copies? Yeah. Do they have copies of that?
They have everything. Yeah, so I'd have to pack this.
Hi, my name is Nathan Suryitsky. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you today. We're here to share our proposal for 37 Washington Avenue. Our plan is to transform the former Avon warehouse into high-quality multifamily residential rental development. The project will include 121 apartments with a mix of one-to-three-bedroom apartments. We believe this project will add real value to the neighborhood. Not only will it revitalize an underused site, it will also provide much-needed housing in a location that makes sense. It just steps away from Lafayette Avenue and close to the train station, making it especially appealing for young professionals, families, and commuters heading into the city. We're also proud to be working in Suffolk at a time of real growth. With Regeneron expanding next door and bringing hundreds of jobs into the area, there's a clear need for more housing options nearby. We see this development as a response to that need, and one that makes sense for where the village is headed. Thank you again for your time and consideration. We look forward to building Suffolk's future together. I'm going to hand this off to Andrew, our engineer, who is going to share more details.
Good evening, Andrew Featherston. I'll take you through some of the, some of the details of the project.
Why don't you just explain to the board what you're doing here?
We are.
No, no, I mean, procedurally, while you're here, or do you want me to do that?
Start secret.
Okay, so just for the board, this, yeah, this is requiring a zone change. So the matter is before the village board for a zone change. The village board has referred them to this board, as was required by the statute, for its review and recommendations. And it has also asked this board to serve as the lead agency pursuant to SECRE. So they're giving a, I guess, background on this. The board is not voting on a site plan right now. It's just going to, you know, go forward with, start the secret process and go through the process of making a recommendation to the village board. For those members who've been on the board for a while, this was here about three years ago. Maybe you could harp on the changes to the plan since then, so that, you know, they can see what the differences were. You know, just to kind of point that out, because it was already here once before.
Sure.
So that's, that's what it's doing here. If anybody has any question on that before they get started.
And was Xtel Development was here before? Are you Xtel?
Yeah, I'm a partner.
Okay.
I was here 23 years ago with the original Avon building facility. I worked for Mazur Consulting. I'm Mazur Consulting for over, almost 24 years now, so I was more than familiar with the site. Yeah, we came, we came a couple of years ago and got a subdivision. It was all one parcel, even though it was on both sides of Washington Street. It was all one parcel, so we subdivided it off to allow this development. That subdivision caused some confusion with Rockland County Drainage Agency. When they looked at their county mapping, it was all one number, and it was supposed to be under the jurisdiction of Rockland County Drainage Agency. That is not the case. We told the Rockland County Drainage Agency that, and they recanted that, that original statement. We have a letter from Rockland County Drainage Agency saying, correctly saying that we are not in their jurisdiction, because we're not on the river. I could take you through the site, whatever your preference is tonight, Mr. Chairman.
You want to do that, folks?
I'd like to know more about the project, how it's changed. Can you focus on the changes?
Do you stay with the mic, though? We need the mic.
Oh, sure. I'm going to bring this.
Yeah.
So. Changes really were to number of units, number of, number of parking spaces. We were back and forth with the mayor a number of times, and we're up to two parking spaces per unit. I'll go down as I have it. What we gave you was a conceptual site plan, architectural plans, a long environmental assessment form. We did a response to comment letters. We had gotten comments from Bonnie Franzen probably a little bit of a while ago, and we responded to those comments. We also, we did a traffic study, and then we updated it slightly for the corrected number of units.
And how many units is it?
Sorry?
How many units?
We've got 121 units and 242 parking spaces, plus there's 10 out on the road.
And how many two-bedroom, three-bedroom, what's the breakdown, if you know?
Oh, I got them. You're just taking me out of order, but I'll give you that. So, um, one, there's 48 one-bedrooms, there's 65 two-bedrooms, and eight three-bedroom units. So there's a total of 202 bedrooms. You know where it's located. I'm not going to go through that. You already said about the change to the TDD district. I told you about the subdivision. It's a five-story building. There's a garage on the first floor, and the garage also, in order to get two spaces, we couldn't get it all on one floor, so we had to go subsurface with, 60 of those parking spaces will be beneath. So the interior parking will ramp down to a lower parking area, all served with elevators and.
And that's all the parking will be underneath?
All the parking will be underneath the building. Some of it will be on the ground floor, equal with Washington Avenue, and some of it will be beneath that. Let me see. The project site as it is, because the site was an industrial site and mostly impervious pavement, there's one building that was knocked down back in like 2002. But the, we're going to have this thing less impervious than it is today because of the landscaping. And some of the landscaping is up on the terrace area, that's where the amenities floor is. There's a swimming pool up on that, on that floor, so we're definitely going to make it greener than it is today. That's about it.
Yeah, do you have a site plan or something other than that?
Yeah, we did, all we did so far was two sheets. We did a grading and drainage plan, and then we did utilities. There's not a lot of civil engineering around the building. It's mostly architectural because the whole site is being occupied by the building just about. It is inside the property lines and doesn't, it doesn't go as far as the original buildings had as far as getting close to the property line. Proposing landscaped areas. We didn't do a landscaping plan yet, but that's coming. But we're proposing green areas here, trees. We've got planters. There'll be stormwater planters because when you're occupying the entire site with the building, you got to be inventive to meet the New York State stormwater requirements. We've got a strip of parking. The parking garage, you come in here and then you can find a parking space, but it also goes outside of the, there's a part that's exposed to the, to the air, I'll say. There's a strip of spaces here that we did as pervious pavement.
That's outside?
That's outside, yep, yep. There's a, the line of the building is shown here, and then there's deck area, patio area beyond that. Everything inside of this, this is all the patio area in the center. Swimming pool on the southeast corner, so it'll get some sunshine all day long.
I'm sorry, I keep asking a question, but the outside parking, is that part of the required parking for the?
Yes, it is. It's on the property. It's just not under the building, yeah, because the building, the property, it's trapezoidal. It does, it's not a square. It has that angle, so the architect didn't, you know, decided not to follow that angle, that property line.
Where?
I'm sorry. For reference, the top of the picture that we're looking at, is that like what would be closest, let's say, to the firehouse?
This is closest to the railroad.
Okay, right there by the fire.
Yeah. This is Washington Avenue. This is Suffolk Place. Regeneron or Avon is right here, the large building.
And now you mentioned two spots per unit.
Yes.
No guest parking.
Well, that, well, yes, that, I mean, is every house going to have two spaces? Oh, that, that's, that's not a, that's not a fair statement, I don't think. Yeah, that's, I don't think that's a fair statement, because there's, 48 units are one-bedroom.
Right, but one-bedroom can be a couple that are both have cars.
Of course it can, certainly it can, but two spaces per unit exceeds what the, what the village is requiring by code.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the villa, I think it's 1.5, the TDD.
Yeah, so.
And that's why there's like a lot of back and forth.
And where are the?
Speak into the microphone.
Where are the 10 spots? You said there was on-street parking, 10 spots?
There's, we marked some of them on Suffolk Place here.
Okay.
Nothing on Washington.
Sure, is there anything else? Hey, I apologize for being late. I guess the other five agenda items, whenever I assume I'm going to be on later in a meeting, I wind up being too late, so I apologize.
And what's your name, please?
Rob Stout. I'm the project attorney. I'm with Whitman, Osterman, and Hannah.
Sorry, I didn't get your name.
Rob Stout.
Rob?
Yes.
So just procedurally, and I apologize if Andrew covered this already, the first thing we're looking for after introducing the project this evening is to ask this board to be a secret lead agency, that is, lead agency in the environmental review of the project. The first substantive thing we're looking for from the village board is a zoning change and extension of the transit development district in order to include this project, which is what's just mentioned, has gone through various iterations with the village board already, one of which was to increase the parking to two per unit. The next thing that the village board will be asking the planning board to do is to give its, a recommendation on that zoning change and comment on that zoning change. I've spoken with your attorney. I understand that referral by the planning board, or excuse me, by the village board, has not yet been made?
It did, it was, it's part, it was both. They sent it here for the referral and secret.
And was that at the April 28th village board meeting?
Um, yes. I'm not sure of the date.
I noticed the first meeting in April, the first village board meeting, they referred the matter to their professionals, to Bonnie Franzen and to the attorney, to comment on the scope of the application to ensure that it was complete, and I believe we're still waiting on the planner's comments.
Yeah, we never received any response to, or comments on our response.
You got to talk into the mic, please, so we can pick it up.
We never received any responses to our submittal from the planner.
So, so we're waiting on those comments, which we'll address when they come in. And I believe it might have been at a subsequent meeting in April that the village board referred the matter to the planning board for its recommendation on the zoning change, and we can confirm the date after this evening. I just raise it because under the zoning code, this board then has 60 days to give its opinion on the zoning to the village board. We're willing to work with the board on this, understanding that you're hearing about it for the first time this evening, understanding that we have to get the SECRE process underway to really get into the meat of this. But that is the first thing this board will be tasked with doing following SECRE, and that's giving its thoughts to the village board on the zoning change.
I just want to ask, because I saw, the clerk showed me something about the SECRE. Did, as part of the petition, was there an EAF, a long-form EAF, to amend it? An updated one? Okay, so it's not from, I, what I'm going to ask Mr. Stout, maybe you could email me, and I think you might have sent me some things, but the long-form EAF.
Okay.
And your response to Bonnie, okay. So did you show me something that said they didn't have?
That was in, in.
That was all in the contact.
Right, okay, but if you could send me the long-form EAF and the responses to Nelson Pope, as well as Nelson Pope's comments, and then we'll, we'll take it from there.
We repeat all of Nelson Pope's comments and then give the response.
It was an attachment to the petition.
Right, but I'm saying Bonnie, in her thing, said something about they had one from 22 or something, I don't know.
We updated.
Yeah, no, right, okay. That was just something that was pointed out to me, okay.
So, I don't know how the board typically does their secret lead agency circulations. We'd be happy to prepare a notice and circulate it on the board's behalf, or work with the village attorney to do that, whatever your pleasure is.
Right, so tonight, what the board would do is declare its intention to serve as lead agency and circulate that around. And, you know, again, we could work with the applicants' counsel on sending that to the appropriate agency, you know, certainly. We should get something from the village board saying they don't want to be, but I know they're, they already sent it to us. But they would really be the only one that would, could do it, but we would also send it to certainly Rockland County Planning and State DOT, just because it's near 59, and then, you know, we'll, and also for their comments with respect to SECRE, so.
When, when it goes to DOT, we have a traffic study there also, that.
Excellent, if you could send me that also, because, just so you know, while your counsel, I mentioned before, oh, I don't know if I mentioned this before, when you were here, when it was here back in '21 or '22, the planning board did make some comments, one of which being a traffic study, so, you know, certainly circle back to that.
That was done probably for that time, and we since had to refresh it, so we have a new one, a new traffic study.
I think Rockland, Rockland Planning made comments too, I believe. I remember seeing comments about the, a zone change on this site from Rockland Planning.
I haven't received anything.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything.
I think they were, they were questioned, because it's near the CB district, not near the transportation area, that why it would be changed to a TDD instead of a CB use. I think that was the gist of it.
Well, we would have to consult with them as part of this process.
Of course.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
I mean, why, why, why TDD instead of Central Business? You're right next to the Central Business District. You're not near the railroad.
I could speak to this a bit. It's actually CB currently, which is, that's the line, meaning Regeneron is PLI, and then across the street is CB. Even though it's a warehouse, you would think it's PLI. I think there's like some confusion within the zoning map, but it's actually CB.
Yeah, the zoning map shows it as planned light industrial, I think.
Right, but that's what they're asking for, change.
Yeah, no, they're meaning.
But why not, why, okay, so why do you need to change it from CB? Why not just go for variances to get the bulk and everything?
Because this wouldn't be permitted in that zone.
No, but you could go for variances, right?
Well, it would bear on the use as well fundamentally, so the standards for use variance are different than an area variance, so it'd be more significant than getting.
You would need a use variance, yeah, and an area variance, okay. How did the, the building directly to the north do it? There's a big condo building just behind the firehouse.
Yeah, 15 Washington.
How did they do it? Any ideas?
I actually, I had the same question. I had the same question. I'm not sure, I looked up some history. I'm not sure how they did it in regards to zoning. I mean, you guys would know, but.
You don't know what district they're in, do you?
No, I think they're M15.
That's what I thought, too.
That's what I think, but I don't know how they.
No, but they're, this is the proper way to do it, because a use variance, you have to show that you can't make any, you know, that it has no value under the current zoning, which this, you know, you wouldn't. which this, you know, you wouldn't be able to show. But the village board has the authority to change the zone and that's what their petition is, to change the zone.
Anyone else?
Is it five stories, including the parking garage?
Yes.
Four stories above?
Yes. There's four living stories above the first floor, correct.
All right, do I have a motion to declare the intention of the village's Suffolk Planning Board to serve as lead agency under SECRE?
And circulation.
And circulation for SECRE appeal.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Stangridge, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McInerney, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it would be probably the July meeting, but that would make sense. I mean, we could put it on for the June meeting and if we don't have anything back.
We'll let you know.
We could adjourn it.
Okay.
If you want to keep the process moving.
I appreciate the place holder for June.
So we will adjourn this to the June 18th meeting at 7:00 PM and if we don't have anything back, we'll let you know so you don't have to, have to show up. Right. All right, thank you. Number six, we have any miscellaneous items to discuss?
No.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, Nathan, could you speak to your last one for me?
SW.
What is it?
I'll just.
Probably talking this. You could talk in this.
Here's the D A report. S W I A T Y C K I.
What's your first name?
It's a really hard name.
S, what is it?
S W I A T Y, Calvin Kite, Exel. C K I.
I know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Number six, miscellaneous items to discuss? Number seven, is there any old business? Any new business? Do we have a motion to schedule the next meeting for June 18th at 7:00 PM?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. McInerney, do we have a second? Mr. Van Sickle, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. McInerney, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Halper, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.